Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a note everybody's present, some a little later than others. Uh, old business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two are attached or were in your packet. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number two is ordinance number ten eighty, updating chapter fifteen, article three, section three oh six, parking certain vehicles in districts allowing residential structures of the city of Lansing, Kansas code. This ordinance was originally presented on March third to the city council meeting and then was tabled for additional discussion. An update was provided on the final recommendation in your packet. I need a motion to approve ordinance ten eighty and authorize the necessary signatures.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? I see no hands. Um, presentation's new business. Item number three is conditional use permit application for one five nine one five Eisenhower Road, Lansing, Kansas. This is for outdoor sales to allow this, uh, for a small auto dealership. Um, the planning commission voted to recommend approval with the condition not to exceed ten vehicles per sale at any one time. Need a motion to approve the conditional use permit, remand back to the planning commission, or deny with a supermajority for the property located at one five nine one five Eisenhower Road, Lansing, Kansas.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question regarding the gravel that the cars are gonna be sitting on. If I read my book correctly.
So that, that question came up during the planning commission meeting whether or not they were gonna be allowed to expand the gravel area that's there, and the answer to that's no. They would be able to use what's there, but they can't, you know, the council's been very clear that they don't want any additional gravel parking added.
So I mean, we know what's there because we've had issues prior to that where this gravel parking lot seems to have gotten
Right. We have aerial imagery that shows, you know, what's there today, and that's what we'll use to guarantee that they don't expand it.
Right, I'm good, thank you.
Matt, I know it was well attended by folks, neighbors.
Correct, it was.
And they had a lot of questions.
They did.
And if I'm reading it right, they are okay with this.
Yes. Their questions were asked and answered, and then once everything was figured out, they were okay.
So, Matt, is it because, when I read it, is it because the fence is gonna block most of that or not? Because there was discussion about a fence. Is that the reason why the neighbors, why not having a problem? Because I'm, I'm like Carrie and the rest of us. I'm really surprised.
The neighbors were concerned about light. They were concerned that they were gonna add lighting and do stuff like that, and there would be light bleed and things like that. And the applicant has no intentions of adding any site lighting on the site. So they were good once that was discussed. In regards to the fence, you're talking about the fence that's along Eisenhower that was put in with Eisenhower with that project?
Right.
That fence is gonna be removed, and that's where they'll put, you know, the cars will be visible from Eisenhower.
But not from the neighbors then, maybe?
Correct.
So it's gonna be only visible from the...
Right, New Lawrence Road has, there's wooded, you know...
Because he's on that corner.
Right.
Any other discussion?
How long is a conditional use permit before I have to renew?
Five years, and it can be pulled at any time by an action of the council or the planning commission. Well, the planning commission would recommend it.
Or violation of the permit.
Correct. If there was violations, then staff would bring it forward to the planning commission for that, and then it would come up to you guys.
Is the lighting part of the conditional use?
There's no additional site lighting added. There wasn't any stipulation added for that, but that's something the council could add if they wanted to, that no site lighting can be added to it.
Neighbors are okay.
I believe the neighbors were okay with the fact they weren't adding any lighting.
Correct.
So you could actually add that to the conditional use, that they will not add additional lighting, correct?
Good, yes.
You would need a building permit to add lighting.
Correct, and we would deny that, yes. That's a good point, thank you.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay. And we can go, we can go that route, too.
I'm good with permit.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Aye.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
No.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is fence request at three nineteen Fairland. Property owner wishes to extend their fence into the platted setback, which staff has reviewed and recommends approval. I need a motion to approve the fence request at three nineteen Fairland.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, Dan.
On, on the setback, does that mean the, the cement pad that they're adjoining the fence to is in violation of the set pad, or did they have a prior permit?
Flatwork doesn't, doesn't, that doesn't apply. The setback only applies to buildings, anything that comes above grade basically. So flatwork like that that's at grade is not impacted by a setback. The only rules that are in the UDO regarding that type of, like a driveway, is it has to be three feet off the property line. Other than that, it can be right up against, you know, within three feet of the property line.
And you know if they're gonna have the construction of the previous project completed before they put in the fence? Are they intending to put in a gate?
I do not know the answer to that. I know that he wanted to go with the fence. I mean, he wanted to start immediately, and he wasn't very happy when I told him that he had to wait to, you know, for it to come through to the council. Um, I do know that he's intending, you know, he's working on the house, and they're adding on and doing those things with the appropriate building permits.
My concern is the five slabs of cement that they're gonna have to get a crane for to move it out with.
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you.
Yes, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
This house has a ton of stuff going on right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got, they've, they've taken concrete walls down in the basement and expanded the house and all kinds, and they've gotten permits for all that stuff.
Yeah, they have building permits for the work we're doing.
Yeah. Anyone else on this one? Oh, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Abstain.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, item numbers, oh, I'm sorry, item number five, another fence request at five twenty-six Hither Green Drive. The property owner wishes to extend their fence into the platted setback, which staff has also reviewed and recommends approval. I need a motion to approve the fence request at five twenty-six Hither Green Drive.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
That sight distance, is that fence is only gonna come down so far on that side road?
So that one, the fence...
It's not gonna come all the way out to the, to Hither Green?
No, no, it's not. It would, it, it would stop, I believe it's about, there's an air conditioning unit on the west side.
Air conditioning unit, and it's like, right? My head, my pack, it looks like about a hundred feet back or something.
It's pretty close, yeah, it's pretty close to that.
Somebody's coming down to get onto Hither Green, there'd be plenty of sight distance.
Correct, it doesn't, it should not impact sight.
Just double checking.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion, motion passed. Item number six is a library advisory board appointments. There were two positions available, which were advertised, and two applications were received. Library Board recommends that Tom Lahon be reappointed to serve another four years, term ending in, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The library board also recommends that Marsha Jackowitz to serve on the Lansing Community Library Board for an unexpired term ending on thirty April, twenty twenty-five.
Go move.
Okay.
Yes, review.
I need a motion to approve the Lansing Community Library Advisory Board appointments for Tom and Marsha um, for a term ending on thirty twenty-six for Tom, I'm sorry, and for Marsha to fill an unexpired term ending on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Jane?
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is Bernard Park Baseball and Softball Complex. The city council approved phase one of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Three bids were received, and the recommendation from the staff and the consultant era is to accept the bid from Sands Construction. I need a motion to accept the bids as presented and award the bids and all alternates in the amount of four million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred dollars to Sands Construction for Bernard Park Baseball and Softball Complex, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is charter ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-two, a charter ordinance exempting the city of Lansing, Kansas from the provisions of KSA fourteen dash five seventy and KSA fourteen dash five seventy-one, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to public improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for the improvements. This will remove public vote requirements under the state law and would allow the city to approve a multi-year capital plan and issue bonds to pay for park improvements. The charter ordinance shall be published once a week for two consecutive weeks, and takes effect sixty days after the final publication unless a sufficient petition is filed in the office of the city, with the city clerk. The charter ordinance requires two-thirds affirmative votes of the governing body. I need a motion to approve adopting charter ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-two.
Go move.
Any discussions on this one? We discussed it quite a bit last time, so. Um, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Item number nine is related. It's resolution number, what?
You have to vote.
Ah, I have to vote, yes. Motion passed. Okay, item number nine, uh, resolution number B two twenty twenty-two, a resolution declaring the intent to the city of Lansing, Kansas to reimburse capital expenditures relating to the construction of certain improvements with proceeds of tax-exempt funding. Bond counsel Gilmore and Bell prepared the resolution so that the city can reimburse capital expenditures related to the construction of certain improvements. The resolution allows work to begin on Bernard Park Baseball and Softball Complex project before general obligated bonds are issued. I need a motion to approve adopting resolution number B dash two dash twenty twenty-two.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on, on this one?
Tim, I'm sorry for not calling you today to do my homework, but I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm right. This is the, the change that was made at the state that we were not aware of?
Yeah.
And so, we're, boy, this allows us to start, and then we're gonna pay it back.
Correct, so it, it wasn't necessarily a change at the state. It was, I think it was a statute from the twenties or thirties that we weren't aware of, uh, that we were made aware of.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a recent, went back that far?
From what I saw, it was...
Fix the microphone a little bit.
Well, I, I think previously we haven't had to incur debt to make any park improvements, and, and this major plan and project that we're doing, we would have to. So this, this was brought forth, um, to us by that, by our attorneys at the bond, you know, the bond, yeah.
And all I'm doing is making sure that it's right in my mind.
And the, and the second part of...
I was just explaining it.
Yeah, and the second part of the question, too, like I, I double-checked, and I think we've got three point seven million in general fund reserves right now. So we can, we can fund those improvements for a couple of months until that bond is issued. So we'll be good.
We've come a long way with that.
The mayor and I were talking about that at one point, too. Think about where we were ten or twelve years ago, and think about where we're at now. We're...
Pretty scary.
Yeah, we're doing good.
Pretty scary.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Stenica?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number ten is construction bids for the K seven and Eisenhower project. Four bids were received on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and were solicited per the city of Lansing's purchasing policy. KDOT has agreed to pay eighty percent of the construction cost, with the remainder split between Lansing at two-thirds and Leavenworth at one-third per the agreement dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty. I need a motion to accept the bids as presented and award the bid in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty cents to Liner Weaver Construction, Inc., upon concurring approval by the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Go move.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? No, go ahead and call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
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 Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed. Reports, city attorney.
Nothing reported, man.
Any department heads? Yeah.
I, Matt and I had spoken a little bit, and, uh, I know we, we wanted to follow up a little bit on, uh, how you guys wanna handle fence requests like that in the future. Um, so I don't know, Matt, if you're, if you're okay coming up.
Yeah, so we thought since there was two on the agenda tonight, this was a good opportunity to talk to you guys about it. Um, the code requires that anything, anytime there's one that's abnormal, or if there's, the code says if it's different, or if there's a property owner, like an ownership dispute between two property owners, that that fence permit or that request be brought to the council. It's unique to do that. Uh, there aren't many other cities, if any, that, that do it that way, and I, we just wanna find out if that's how you wanna continue to do it, basically. When they're in a building setback like that, it's pretty easy for staff to look at it and see whether or not it makes sense to do it. If it's in the right of way, I could certainly see bringing that to council, because then you're, they're asking permission to put something on essentially city property.
So what you're really asking, Matt, is do we think that you have the expertise to do your job with, uh... What?
The way you worded that, I don't know how to answer that. I mean it, compliment. Well, I appreciate that.
I mean, are you asking for you and the city administrator to make the decisions? I'm waiting for you to tell me what the recommendation is.
Yeah, what is the...
Well, in order to change this, we would have to change the code. We'd have to bring something forward similar to the, not as extensive as the RV thing, but there'd have to be a code change in order to make that happen.
I've always wondered why these come to us. That's...
It's unique, for sure.
Yeah. Why can't this just be handled?
Like I said, if it's, if the fence was being placed in the right of way, like, we've had a few that were, where it was out in the right of way. I could certainly see that coming to you guys for permission, because the only people that can obtain property or disman, or, you know, get rid of property are the, is the council. So I can certainly understand the reasoning for bringing those to you, but when it's just in a setback, it seems a little excessive to me, in my own opinion.
Is it something that the planning commission can do at their monthly ones? Just see them and say, hey, as far as like setbacks and things, let them handle it. If it's something out of the ordinary, it would come to us, or if they appeal it?
If we did that for the setback ones and took them to planning commission, it would actually lengthen the process for people who are applying, because council meets twice a month, planning commission meets once a month. So you'd run, you could run into a situation there where somebody's gonna have to wait longer to get an answer.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
I'd be okay with seeing something written, writing, but, you know, I, these routine fence requests.
Just like an update?
You guys, if you're right.
Because I think you're smart and on the ball. That's what I want to do.
All right.
What he was trying to say. I appreciate it. Trying to crawl out of what... I know you didn't intend it that way.
Yes, the one thing I'd wanna see, though...
Crazy and publicly criticize and...
One thing I'd wanna see, though, is if, like someone requests one, if a neighbor had a problem with it, and they voice, or voice a problem with it, then, then it would come to the council.
Right.
If nobody complains, then you're good to go.
Yeah, I could certainly, I can certainly see that. I mean, these are, these are situations where especially, like, both of these were, were setbacks, or it was going into the setback on the street side.
Right.
So the chances of a neighbor complaining on that are pretty slim.
Right.
But I could see that scenario where it could potentially impact the neighbor, and the neighbor doesn't want it there. And, and we do have within our code that if you're gonna put it right on the property line, the neighbor has to agree to it, and they have to provide that in writing to us before we will issue the permit.
Or it goes one foot on your problem.
Correct. As I say, the other side of that is it goes one foot in.
Right.
Now, the downside of the putting fences one foot in, and I'm getting farther off in the weeds than I intended to get tonight, but the downside of putting them one foot in is then you end up with a two-foot strip of ground that nobody mows, nobody maintains, and it's a no man's land.
Right.
So, I think, not to put you on the spot, but don't you have one between your neighbor and you that's that way?
Yeah, and it's, it's...
It was before you got there, obviously.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, but it's, it's very tight, so I can't turn my mower around. I have to walk all the way back backwards. So, yeah, it's, it's very tight.
Right.
Or nothing grows, because it's blocked.
Right.
Which is, me and my neighbor, we put rock down.
Yeah.
This is gonna require a code change?
Yeah, because it's, because it's codified in the code that anything abnormal comes to the council, we would have to revise that.
Change to the code, then, would, like, if a neighbor would have a problem with that, is there a notification process in there? Like, if I come to you and I say, I'm gonna put this fence in, the neighbor doesn't know I'm gonna do that.
If they...
Are we gonna notice, say, hey, you're gonna do that?
We could do that. If they were going to put the fence in, and they didn't wanna notify the neighbor, they would have to put it one foot in their property. If they wanna put it on the property line, if they don't provide us with a letter saying that their neighbor agreed to it, then we're gonna reject the permit and tell them, you have to go to your neighbor and get permission to do this, because it's right on the property line. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
So it's, it's gonna have to come back either way, but we just wanted to get a feel for it, to see if it made sense to try to revise that and bring it back.
Yeah.
I'm good with the... Okay.
And we can, you can put something together, Matt, like in a one pager, like, we can look at it at the work session and say, oh, yeah, that's good.
It'll actually, same as the RV thing, it'll require an ordinance and everything, so it's gonna have to come back through for everybody to review what changes we're gonna make anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
City attorney. Oh, you already gave me, I'm sorry. City administrator. Well, you know, you jumped a gun on the division head thing, so it was, throwing me off.
Um, so a while back, you guys had asked about, uh, double-checking on the turning movements into and out of town center. Uh, we did talk to an engineer about doing a concise study about that. Uh, we just got that back pretty recently, so we'll try to share that with you guys in the future. Um, very preliminarily, though, the, the results, that worst place for access into town center, uh, is along four H road, pulling into and pulling out of Center Drive. So that, that four H road intersection, um, probably the easiest...
Why is that?
I think, I think, well, part of it is because four H road is pretty narrow, but, but secondly, and how
meridian.
you could maybe fix it, is the median. Um, if there wasn't a median there, that would make the turning movements much easier. But we've got decorative light poles there, we've got that brick structure that says Town Center, we've got all of that stuff there, so. Um, I'll, I'll disseminate that traffic report to you guys at a future meeting, but that might be something for us to be thinking about, is, is how attached we are to, especially that median, uh, perhaps even the median along Mary Street as well, uh, the, the median on Center Drive on the Mary Street side. Um, but then again, what we do with those light poles, if there's light poles and the medians there, and then that got us talking, too. Um, if we get rid of some light poles or replace a few light poles, it might be getting close to time to replace a lot of light poles, which, which gets to be pretty expensive.
We can't even get parts for those light poles, can we?
Jason Crum is Val's Auburn over there for baseball fields to use those light poles. I'm looking at it.
Jason's like, leave me out of this.
Jason's got, you know, like, light poles, we got excess light poles, we got ball fields and parking lots out there at Bernard Park.
Aren't gonna be quite tall.
But you're exactly right, you're exactly right, though, and we, we struggle to find parts for those, um... Yeah, and we'd probably, if we did something different, we'd probably get something, maybe without the arms, maybe without the irrigation, um, but...
Something simple and easy to fix.
Yeah. But so I, I don't have anything for you guys tonight, but I guess my, my task for you guys is to just be thinking about that Center Drive area, how attached you are to those medians, especially the medians at the edges, what you think about those light poles, and, uh, you know, we might have numbers at some point to, to think about what it might be to replace those, so. Um, the county had reached out to us about that joint meeting. We spoke about it, and the, the feedback from you guys is to make sure we have an agenda. Uh, since then, I'd spoken to the county, and we would talk about bridges at a joint meeting, and I think they also wanna talk about property taxes at a joint meeting. Um, so two dates that might work for the county, and they had offered to come here to our meeting on a Thursday evening, um, would be May fifth, so that's our first regular meeting in May. Uh, and I, I believe the other date that might work for the county is the, the final Thursday in May, which would be our work session, um, so perhaps before those. Um, so I'm not sure if those work for you guys, or if you guys wanna email me or contact me at the next meeting to let me know. Um, but they did reach back out to us about...
I tell you, like, I tell you all the time, just pick what works for the majority and...
Well, and I kinda figured, yeah, if, if we do it on a Thursday evening, you guys will probably be around anyway.
Yeah, normally available on Thursdays.
Well, should I just tell them, then, whatever works best between those two dates in May, the first Thursday or final Thursday?
It's your preference whether we do it during a regular meeting or a work session. I mean... Yeah, that's what I was, I was thinking if, if we make it a work session, just kinda more free talk.
We, we might be doing a budget work session that night, too. I'm not...
Maybe. Maybe. Not anymore.
Don't we do our board, the budget in June?
Is that June, you think? Okay. But we can, we can shoot for May then, the final Thursday in May. I can pass that on to them. Perfect.
All right.
So another thing, a lot of stuff about our work session from last week, mostly good things. But so one item that, that got brought up toward the end of the last council meeting, that idea of doing partial property tax based on our valuation increase and partial sales tax. One of the things that I didn't think about when that idea got brought up, keep in mind, we will be passing our budget probably on September 1st and the election for the sales tax would be in November. So by the time we pass our budget, we won't know if that sales tax will pass. So if the sales tax is voted down by our citizens, we would still have that property tax in there. We can't, we can't go back and, and remove that once the sales tax, if it, if it were to fail. One other thing that crossed my mind too, where it's, it's kind of easier if it is just a pure sales tax. You know, if, if there is a city council in five years that's passionate about lowering property taxes, you know, if the sales tax is there, it's there for 20 years. But the property tax rate can be adjusted every year by the city council. So in a sense, it, I think it might be cleaner if it was just a sales tax. But I know we had spoken about that a little bit at the work session. That idea of doing a little bit of each because our valuation has gone up. But so I, I guess that's my two cents. I think it'd be cleaner if it was just a sales tax, but I'm, I'm open to what you guys think too. And if we want to, if we want time to kind of think about it too, that's okay.
I think pretty much everybody's on, on favor of sales tax.
A couple other things too, and so I know we, we can't formally do anything on the property that we expressed interest in until the council authorizes that. But in the meantime, would you guys like me to engage like a Realtor or agent to assist us with this process? Or, I mean, what, what are your guys'?
What's the normal procedure? Wouldn't you have to go through the listing agent?
Well, and the churches is listed through a listing agent. I wasn't sure if we would want an agent to represent the city in this matter.
I would say we get somebody to represent us. To me, it would be a conflict of interest if we, you know, were to take their agent.
I think we should have our-
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk to the mayor about that a little bit and get, get rolling on that. One thing along these lines too, with pool stuff. You know, we, we had signed that contract with Vireo to begin the design of City Park. They're moving along really good on the design of City Park. But one thing about that also is they are still designing that splash pad. And this is another one of those things where we need to be thinking about what happens if, if the pool sales tax passes? What do we do with that splash pad? Do we say, we'll keep the design and maybe pause that or, or what? So there's, there's things that we just kind of have to keep in mind. There's going to be a lot of balls in the air that November, December, January timeframe. So be, be thinking about that.
I'm still a-
What's the timeline?
Dumping a bunch of money into City Park. I just think that there's only two ways in and out of that park. And once we move the baseball fields, how much traffic is going to be in that park? And I just am opposed to dumping a bunch of money to a park that's not going to be used very much. It sits amongst an industrial area. That's just my opinion, so.
Yeah. Well, and I, again, I think, I think my thing is just reminding you guys that that design is continuing even in the midst of all the, the pool discussion. And if the pool does get voted down by citizens, that design will be there. And if you guys want to proceed with that, we would have, you know, a few months there to kind of figure out what we want to do, so. So something to keep in mind, like I said, a lot of things just depend on what would happen in November with our, with how our citizens vote on that. I think that's all I have, so.
No more?
No more.
Well, thank you. And we will go around the horn, starting with Gene.
All right, really don't have anything other than I. Hope we're not becoming numb of what's going on in Ukraine. Hundreds of people are, innocent people are dying every day. And, you know, and I, I ask myself what else I can do about it. And other than personally, we donate to organizations that we can trust and have faith in. It doesn't seem like a much, but if we can all do something. I mean, what's going on there is terrible. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jim. Marcus?
Jim, into all of our city staff, there's a lot of work that went into tonight. A lot of work that went into codes that we passed. And I'm excited about the library and the volunteers library. And Jason, keep your head up, man. You're doing great work and I appreciate our friends coming tonight. I know we didn't have any questions for you, but we really do appreciate all the work that you all are doing.
They didn't, they didn't mind.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jesse?
We may have some light poles for you in the parking lot.
I don't think he's taking them.
Yeah, thanks, Tom and Marsha for volunteering to be on the library boards. We really appreciate the volunteer effort you're giving in. Glad to see we're still shopping local. I know Sands is in Leavenworth, but they're right on Eisenhower, so, you know, it's still, Leavenworth's local to me. Liner Weaver's still local, so I'm just glad to see us giving work to our community, so. But, you know, we appreciate everything you guys do, Tim. Your whole team.
Thanks, Jesse. Thank you.
It was here last week.
Thank you, I called for that.
It wasn't here last meeting though.[1607.65]